I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. This is for a special service levy hearing. Perhaps before we start, my name is Judy Swanson. I'm the head of council here. And if you could start here, Rob, and just introduce yourselves.
Rob Adams.
Eric Reichert.
George Heidman.
Rhonda Copeland.
Okay, so we welcome you all here tonight. The purpose of this public hearing this evening is to present the proposed special service levy. It gave, I'm going to give you a little bit of background as to why we're here and what this special service levy is about. As we are all aware, the municipalities of Manitoba were forced to amalgamate in 2015. And part of that amalgamation act states that each municipality must have a single mill rate. So this council has fought against the use of a single mill rate right from the beginning. Our municipality, like others that have a considerably higher assessment in the rural compared to the urban, have fought to try to keep two mill rates because it makes sense. So with that knowledge, we lobbied both provincial governments to allow the municipalities such as ours to use a differential mill rate rather than to be forced to move to a single one. We have met face to face with three different ministers to plead our case. We compiled resolutions to present at the AMM, which is our convention for the municipalities. I personally spoke to these resolutions, and each one of these resolutions passed at the AMM. So they also, AMM, took it to the province as well. We have taken this to district meetings. We have taken it to the MMAA, which is the Association for the CAOs. And each time, we asked the one question as to why should we move to a single mill rate? What is the reason to move to a single mill rate? And we never did receive an answer as to why. All we were told is that it's part of the legislation and that they would assist us to move to the single mill. We even delayed this meeting so that we could meet with the new minister, thinking, well, you know, here we go. We have a new government, so maybe things have changed. But no, that didn't work either. So we did, however, receive an extension through the lobbying. We were supposed to have this done four or three years ago?
Twenty twenty-two.
In 2022. So they did give us an extension for the municipalities that haven't done their single mill rate. So we did get that out of it, but that is all we got. So we have been given two choices. And if we don't proceed with this now, the end of next year, the province will come in and they will make our decisions for us. So we had no choice, but we've run our course. We've done what we can do. So we are going to continue to move on and try to get this done. So we had two choices. The first one is to move the mill rate straight across rural and urban. And the second one is to use a special service levy. That's the only choices they gave us. Other provinces have base taxes. They have other things that could have been used, but that wasn't the case in this province. So if we move to the mill rate straight across, the urban would see a decrease of 21.1%, and the rural would see an increase of 24.4%. So this would also mean that higher assessed homes would see a significant increase and that lower assessed properties would see a lower, a definite decrease in property taxes. So today, our urban mill rate is 20.0263, and the rural is 13.275. So they're nowhere near each other. So as a council, we spent considerable time on how to make this change. We immediately ruled out moving straight across as that's not reasonable for our rural part of this municipality. It doesn't make sense. So that was out. The only other option was the special service levy. So the first thing we did when we looked at the special service levy was remove all farmland from this levy so that rural farmland is not part of the change in this taxation. We also wanted to make these changes and had our CAO, Leo, and his staff have, we want this done in a non-assessment year so that everybody's clear when they get their tax ba, this year, that it's not going to be because the assessment changed. It's going to be what it is. So hopefully, this meeting tonight will bring you some clarity to what a special service levy is and how it may affect you personally and how it's distributed through the municipality. This is a truly complicated thing. And any, we're the first council. We're the only councils that have gone through amalgamation. It is not as easy as one might think because we have taken two municipalities with two different taxes and put them into one. And we worked really well with two mill rates, but unfortunately, that's not what the provincial government has insisted that we do. So we're just going to, today, Leo, I want to get, turn it over to Leo and have him run, walk through what we have on the screen here and what you have in front of you. And hopefully, you'll have some clarity from this because the intent of this meeting is to make sure people understand what we're doing and that it is, it is truly the only way that we can make this work in our municipality without loading, unloading onto one part of our municipality, which is not fair. So with that, Leo, I would ask you to, so what will happen is Leo will do his presentation, and then there will be questions that we'll have, and then questions from the council, and then the final opportunity for new comments from anyone that's here. So I'm really pleased to see a good turnout tonight because often we have these meetings and nobody shows up. And then, you know, and then the next day in the coffee shop, I hear all kinds of things that I thought, I really wish you would have come to the meeting. So I am delighted personally, and I know the council is delighted that we have some people here to hear this and to give us some feedback because we did spend a lot of time, this has been, well, since 2015, we've been working to try to do this properly. So Leo?
Thank you very much, Judy. Before we get going, if I could ask everyone to ensure their cell phones are turned off or is on mute. We don't need Ivan to be pausing a ruckus in here. Thank you.
Maybe our technical issues aren't fixed.
Kara?
There we go.
Yeah, there it goes. So we are here today to go over the proposed special services levy bylaw, 2024-03. So there are three main components to the bylaw. So the first is proposing to broaden the previous urban protection levy bylaw, which ended in 2023. It included police, fire, and EMO for all residents' commercial and institutional properties in the entire municipality and removing animal control and street lighting. So it was urban, and now it's going to be for all residents' commercial and institutional properties in the rural as well. The second component is updating our garbage collection costs for the urban community. And we'll be repealing the previous waste and disposal bylaw that was improved in 1994 that had an indefinite end. And finally, the third component is a new special services levy for the urban community for street construction and maintenance, street lights, animal control, tree management, and beautification. The ultimate objective of this proposed bylaw levy is to prevent an unfair tax shift. As mentioned in our mail-out and as Judy has mentioned, the special service levy is not additional taxes. Rather, the services are covered under this levy. The services covered under this levy already exist. The levy is a method to apply the cost of these services to the ratepayers who utilize or benefit from these services. The purpose of this propose, this proposal is to minimize the tax impact to rural ratepayers as we transition to a single mill rate. And charging properties in a fair manner for these services is of the utmost importance to council. So why are we doing this? Well, there are many reasons, but the main reason is because the province forced amalgamation on us. What does this mean? Well, if we went straight across the board with one single mill rate with no special levy, our municipality would see a tax shift from the urban to the rural with urban tax mill rate going down 21.1% and the rural tax mill rate increasing by 24.4%. We will discuss more on this later on. Another important reason is that the Urban Protection Services Levy Bylaw, 2019-01, ended in 2023. And so if we do not have a replacement service levy in place for 2024, there will be a huge tax shift to higher assessed properties in the urban area. Also, we have an outdated garbage collection special service levy bylaw, that being bylaw 9403. This bylaw has been outdated, has outdated costs that are no longer relevant to today's cost. And also, it includes an indefinite ending to the bylaw. And the municipal board does not approve special service bylaws of this nature anymore. Rather, the municipal board will only allow special service levies to have a maximum length of 10 years so that municipalities can update costs as well as methodology of taxation as needed. Because we are having the hearing today, one might wonder what is happening with our financial plan and its legislative deadline requirements. Not to panic, we have received ministerial approval in delaying our 2024 financial plan to accommodate this special services levy bylaw proposal. And in typical provincial and federal fashion, meeting requirements set out in the act are painfully lengthy. But unfortunately, as a municipal government, we must abide by them. Ultimately, the objective of this bylaw is that we want everyone to pay their fair share for services. And with this proposal, overall, it minimizes impact on urban versus rural properties as well as the impact on high assessed properties versus lower assessed properties. So as mentioned in the previous slide, amalgamation was forced upon us by the provincial government via the Municipalities Amalgamations Act. And hence, the municipality of Boise, Morton was formed in 2015. At that time, amalgamated municipalities were given the authority to use a taxation tool called differential mill rates on a temporary basis. Through the Municipalities, Municipal Amalgamations Act, the province of Manitoba has mandated all municipalities to impose a single mill rate by year 2022. Our municipality lobbied to the province through AMM and MMA from the very start to the bitter end. Unfortunately, our lobbying efforts were only successful in extending this deadline by two years to 2024. We passed resolutions. We spoke at AMM and MMA district meetings and annual conventions. We met with the current and past ministers of our department of the province. And we even came up with a proposal to change and expand the existing tax tools to make life easier for municipalities. We also met with executives both AMM and MMA to plead our case and give a more fulsome understanding of this convoluted and unfair requirement that only creates an extra burden on council and administration with more red tape and confusion explaining this to the ratepayers. We asked a simple yet tough question, why do we have to do it? And we always left the ministerial meetings with disappointment as no minister has ever had an answer for us. Instead, the ministers told us that a single mill rate is an easy thing to achieve as there are many tax tools available to municipalities and that provincial staff, the province has staff that can assist municipalities in coming up with a plan to transition to a single mill rate. Another important item to note, many municipalities did not know the consequences of the impact of going to a single mill rate. And others have gone straight across the board, either in one shot over or gradually over the past eight years. And it has created huge issues for many municipalities. So the tax tool that we determined is the easiest to proceed with in obtaining the single mill rate is a special services tax tool. As per section 312 of the Municipal Act, if approved by bylaw, a municipality may provide as a special service to all or part of a municipality, one or more of the following, and you have the listing there. One of the issues we brought forward to the province is that the listing is too restrictive. But again, the province did not want to consider an extension of the options as we had recommended via a new zone levy as an option. So in order to minimize the tax shift, the easiest way considering the tax tools is to implement it using a special services levy. The process includes analyzing all properties, reviewing what we have in place, and determine what is reasonable and what is fair. Then we send out public notices to those properties that are affected specifically by the proposed special service levy. After that, we hold a public hearing at least 21 days from when the public notice was sent out, which we are here today, having the public hearing. After the hearing, if council is satisfied with the feedback overall, they could proceed to give first reading. Then from there, we must send out a detailed package of information to the municipal board for their review and approval. This process takes roughly three weeks. Then, once the municipal board makes a decision, it is relayed to our municipality, and we are obligated to adjust things, if needed, by the municipal board. If the municipal board is okay with, or with it, or has minor tweaks as recommendations, we can continue with second and third reading of the bylaw. Then, once the bylaw is approved, there is an administrative process that takes place, but I don't need to bore you with that information today. So council and administration had many meetings over the past many months and had many, even three to four-hour meetings in length, reviewing the different options. And one of the main reasons is that this hearing is now, is that in the fact that we had met with the current, we wanted to meet with the current minister, and we did so prior to beginning the process of transitioning to the, to this special service levy. It was a last-ditch effort to bring forward our concerns. Again, it was unsuccessful, but we did truly give our best efforts from start to finish throughout the years. Now, some of the factors that we needed to consider are the protection services bylaw that has expired and who and how it will affect properties, rural versus urban properties, as well as high versus lower assessed properties, per parcel options ranging from 0 to 100% on certain property classes. We focused on protection services between 50 and 100% per parcel. The previous bylaw had a 42% per parcel levy on it. Again, this impact on lower and higher assessed properties as well as how to reduce the impact on farm property class. When we began the process, one of the first things we reviewed was the number of properties that we have in each property class and also the portioned assessment. As an example, our municipality has a total of 2,913 properties valuing a portioned assessment total of just over 244 million. The urban area has 869 properties with a portioned assessment value at 63 million versus there are 2,400, 2,044, sorry, rural properties with a portioned assessment of 169 million. Then there's also different ways of looking at it, the breakdown between residential, commercial, institutional properties that are included in this proposal, and then also reviewing high and low assessed properties. One very important piece in the decision-making process is that we have 1,559 farm properties valuing at 123 million portioned assessment in our municipality. And council chose specifically to omit the farm property class from this proposed special services levy. In our municipality, the farm property class represents 72.9% of the rural taxation base. And by omitting them, their taxes will go slightly down, something very important to remember later on when we discuss the tax impacts. Another is picking up the otherwise exempt properties, such as the school and hospital, and to have them pay more of their fair share for these services as well. As one might wonder, there is a potential for hundreds, if not thousands, of ways to analyze and determine the methodology to undergo, whether it be by assessment, frontage, per parcel, or a combination of them, and how much is allocated to that method, and whether to include certain properties or not, or whether or not to go straight across the board as is, such as many amalgamated municipalities have already done. There is a ton of stuff to think about, and it was a very challenging task to undergo. But fairness is of the utmost importance for council. Other factors to keep in mind, that on average, one-third of everyone's tax bill are school taxes, and we have no control over it, but we are still obligated to collect them. This year in 2024, there will be no rebate check as the education tax rebate will instead be automatically deducted from your tax bill. The urban protection special services bylaw expired in 2023. We will also be repealing the waste collection service bylaw, 9403. We also factored in the assessment impact and increase on farm properties have been spiking rapidly in most recent years. And mitigating this tax shift as reasonably as we can was an extremely important factor. And ultimately, how to get to a single mill rate by having one special levy to lessen the tax shift impact of a single mill rate. The first component of the proposed bylaws are protection services. Previously was covered under the urban protection bylaw, 2019-01, which ended in 2023. Our proposal for this component includes police, fire, and EMO services, but changing it to all residential, commercial, and institutional properties in the entire municipality. It's very important to note that nearly three-quarters of the rural property area, the farm property class, is not included. Before you, we have the cost forecasting for the years 2024 to 2030. These costs range between 2.5% to 4.5% increase. As an example, our policing costs are by contract with rates on the rise. And we have an EMO program with a volunteer fire department with costs relating to these services that the municipality also pays for. In 2024, the total projected cost for this area is $509,000 and up to $638,000 in the year 2030. The tax methodology that has been determined was that this area is to be levied at 50% per parcel and 50% based on the assessment. Important to note, the previous bylaw that ended had a 42% per parcel and a 58% based on assessment. By choosing the 50/50 method allows a continuation of moderate tax increase to lower assessed properties and ultimately having everyone pay their fair share for services. In this area, each of these properties will pay a per parcel of $189 in 2024, and the remainder of the $254,000 will be based on the assessment. The second component is the waste collection service. The same people from bylaw 9403 are covered in this area, in this component. So all residential, commercial, and institutional properties within the urban community of Boise. The reason for why we are including this is because the previous bylaw maxed out at $66,000. And as you can see, in 2024, we are over $74,000 in total cost for the service. Again, we have estimated the cost for a seven-year period ranging between 2.5% to 3.5% per year, with our last year being a total projected cost at just over $92,000. This service, we have, we have an excellent contract with Cal-Friesen, and we are one of the only municipalities of our size that are paying today, municipalities of our size and other municipalities are paying well over $100,000 annually. And so we have an excellent contract in place with Cal-Friesen. And it extends for another year plus an option of another five years. The tax methodology for this component will remain the same at 100% per parcel. So in 2024, when the total cost of $74,000 and change, and we have 1,001 property, ratable properties, we have a per parcel rate averaged out at $75 per property. And then in 2023, all the way up to $93 per property. And then the final component is the new levy for the urban community of Boise, specifically for street construction and maintenance, street lights, animal control, tree management, and beautification. Implementing this service levy is critical in our objective in obtaining current distribution of property taxes between rural and urban and allowing our municipality to transition to a single mill rate. The total cost in 2024 is broken down in the chart and is $205,000 in 2024 and up to $254,000 in 2030. Now, this does reflect the true cost for the following services, street lighting, animal control, tree management, beautification. However, it only includes a portion of the street construction and maintenance costs as certain things are allowed and disallowed in a special service levy. And also, as mentioned in last week's newspaper, there is some planning underway for street paving and repairs with a plan to be reviewed and approved by council later on for future years. The tax methodology for this, for these urban special services is 100% based on assessment. This next slide, we have an example of an urban residential property assessed at $331,000. And you see their tax bill in 2023. There are a few highlighted lines. The first on the right side is being the Boise area. So this is the differential mill rate that we have had that we will no longer be able to have. This, again, in 2024 and future years, that this will no longer be on your tax bill. The next two that are highlighted are the special services, 2019-01, and as well as the 9403 waste and disposal. The first is the special services levy, and that ended in 2023, hence why we are here to continue to have levy in place for that. And then the 9403 waste and disposal, which we are repealing and is second part of this proposal. For this specific property, all three components of this bylaw proposed will be added into one line on their tax bill. The next slide here, we have an example of a rural residential property assessed at $334,000. This 2023 tax bill shows, highlights a line that has Martin area, and it's highlighted in yellow. This, again, will no longer be on your tax bill. This again will no longer be on your tax bill. But for this specific property, they'll have the special uh special services line added um to their property late relating. Only to the protection services component presented in the proposal today. And then on this slide, we have an example of a two thousand and twenty-three property tax bill of with the farm property. That also has a residence on the property as well. As you could see on the first line highlighted is the residential portion of their tax bill. And it's assessed at fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred. And the remainder of the property is farm, which is the uh which the farm property portion is assessed at four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Now, for this property, because it has partial residence on the roll, they are going to be paying for the protection service levy based on this only. So the residential portion, which has that portioned assessment of twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred. Is what will be based on the fifty percent portion on the assessment. Plus the per parcel levy of a hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars for the year two thousand and twenty-four. Again, the farm property portion that is assessed at four-hundred-and-forty-four, four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand will not be levied. In any of the three components under this proposed levy. Only to the residential portion. And finally highlighted again on this one is the Morton area, which will be gone and replaced with that special services portion as already previously mentioned. Now here on this slide, we have uh the breakdown of the tax impact of different properties in two thousand and twenty-three. And with the changes that we are proposing in this proposal, along with the school tax rebate changes. The first I want to go over is the last line, which is highlighted in green. The farm property. Again, this property. As mentioned earlier, the far- the farm property class represents seventy-two-point-nine percent of the rural area taxes. And in two thousand and twenty-three, this property would have paid a thousand dollars and ninety-three ta- uh dollars in municipal taxes. Under this proposal, this farm property will now be paying. One thousand and sixty-one dollars in municipal taxes in two thousand and twenty-four, a decrease of thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. And with the school rebate now being applied directly to your tax bill, another reduction of your tax bill will be over four-hundred dollars. So in two thousand and twenty-four, this prop- farm property tax bill will be reduced by four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. The next impact I want to go over is the first two residential properties assessed at similar a hundred thousand uh for a total assessment. The first being an urban property and the second being a rural residential property. When you look at the two thousand and twenty-three, you'll notice the school taxes are the same. But when you look at the municipal taxes, the urban is paying nearly twice as much as the rural residential property. Council did not see this as paying their fair share. Yes, more services are in the community of Boise, but everyone has access to those services, both urban and rural. Of course, we are fully aware that there is water and sewer system. But those ratepayers are also paying a quarterly utility invoice on top of their taxes. So one of the things that is being being proposed is to slightly close this gap. So in two thousand and twenty-four, the urban property will be going down roughly forty-six dollars. Under this proposal, and the rural municipal taxes will be going up two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars for this rural property. Again, because this is a rural residential property. Now you'll be paying for that protection services in this proposal. Overall, with the school tax rebate now being applied directly directly to your tax bill. Overall difference in tax bills from twenty-three to twenty-four. For that urban property assessed at a hundred thousand is going down two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And the rural residential property will be going at twenty-seven dollars. The next two lines are examples of a residential property assessed at three-hundred thousand in both urban and rural. Same principle as the last example. Is it fair, the same valued urban property is paying almost two-thousand dollars more than the rural property? And in turn, the impact is broken down. Ultimately, the final tax bill of the urban residential assessed at three-hundred thousand will see a reduction of eleven-hundred dollars on their tax bill. And the rural resident residential property will actually see a two-hundred-and-ninety-six-dollar reduction to their tax bill. And the last two examples that I have there are comparing an urban commercial property versus a rural commercial property. With the commercial property seeing a decrease of a hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars on their tax bill from twenty-three to twenty-four. And whereas the rural commercial property will see a slight increase to a hun- of a hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Two last comments relating to this slide. One might wonder, it looks like rural is seeing that tax increase overall, but it is not as the farmland is seeing a reduction in its. Municipal property tax portion. And again, this area represents seventy-two-point-nine percent of the rural area. And the other comment is that with this special services levy, we have the ability to pick up otherwise exempt properties. Uh which I have included as uh which are included such as the school and hospital. As a goal for them to pay their fair share as well. So in closing, the special services levy will support council's goal of a fair taxation policy for Boise Morton. By maintaining the current distribution of taxes between rural and urban areas. And recognizing and mitigating tax shift between higher and lower assessed properties. Ensuring that all properties are contributing to a basic amount to the special services as presumed as proposed and presented today. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Clear as mud, everyone. At this time, were there any questions or comments that were registered?
We had no um no one registered.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Like, we've we've been through this for a long time, so. Any, and I guess um I would open this up for any comments from the floor, any questions that you have, any comments. It's a, it's a lot to take in, it's. It's complicated, but it's not, it's uh, it's the lesser of what options that were given to us in our mind. Yes.
How much is the shift from RCMP from the rural to the urban?
Well, the before, the rural wasn't paying for RCMP, right? So when you call nine-one-one, you weren't getting, you didn't, you weren't being paid. So now there will be a percentage of all of the RCMP, the same as the urban and the rural, will be paying a percentage of that.
Will it patrol it? Is that going to increase in the RM or is that going to stay the same?
Well, we could say the same for the urban, like we, we all agree that the policing. We certainly are not real excited about the policing that we have. Once again, we have talked, we've had the RCMP in here. They have a quarter of their people are, they don't have, they're vacant uh positions. So they're like everybody else, they uh they're in the same boat. We have a a contract with them, as you know, and if we give up that contract with them. Then we are at um if if a catastrophe of some sort happens in our community, we're putting ourselves at great risk by not. The other thing, by having a contract, we are guaranteed RCMP. Whereas if you don't have a contract and your detachment is short people, they're not necessarily going to be here. They can be uh in in another municipality, so. I guess the first thing we will do is tell the RCMP that this is straight across the board. That you will be uh patrolling our urban and our rural equally because both are now contributing to policing. I think that's fair, I think.
Fair, but it's not going to happen, you know what?
We're going to try, uh you know what, we we do the best we can, it's against, it's um it's out of our control. We have met with them, we have given them what we'd like to see and what we want to see, and. They, they give us lip service. But do we see them anymore? You just need to go to the school at any given day, and no, we don't see them anymore, so. Uh I agree in the rural, we, you know, the crime is not necessarily always going to be in urban, it will be in the rural as well. So, but that is one of the things that we will do as a council, we will go to the RCMP, we will call them into our meeting and say. If this passes, this is something that we need to do, you need to be in the rural because they're paying their fair share of your uh of the cost. So that's the best we can do, and I hope it works. If it doesn't, we need to hold them to task. I guess that's the best we can come up with.
It's my understanding in the past. That the RCMP was obligated to travel every road in their district once per year. So how do we know that they're going to increase that?
They bring us statistics. And they bring us what they have done in every month, and they bring it on a regular basis, so we do get that report. What we should be doing, you get the report, I think in the paper they have a readout of what they've all done in. But we actually get the statistics about uh how many, how the increases of break and enters or the decreases and how much time they've spent. In our municipality, so we do have that. If you can go by what is in writing, they are keeping up in our municipality. But are they in the rural and are they uh in the urban enough? We would love to see them here more. The other thing is, we now have RCMP living in our community. Which is a really big bonus because at least the police car is sitting in the community, so. Yeah.
I got one more question, Judy.
Sure, yep.
Uh who runs that municipality, the province or the council?
Uh the province runs uh, I mean, they do, they they legis- they legislate us law, and you know that's how it works, we. Uh if we didn't do this tonight, next year, the the province will send people in here and any municipality that hasn't. Got a single mill rate, they will do it straight across the board.
I understand the municipalities go into court though.
No, we did that, we tried that.
No, it was on the news the other day, there's municipalities taking the, taking the pass.
I hope so.
They are?
I hope they do, but I cannot see it working because they've a lot of, we're very few of municipalities left that haven't done this. You know, like Leo pointed out, there's a lot of municipalities and we we know a lot of them in our areas and around us that have over the last seven years. Creeped up and done this dressed across the board. So that a a person in those municipalities, they haven't had a public meeting, I think we're one of the first municipalities to actually have a public meeting on this. And say, this is what's going on, because I think it's important, we think it's important for you guys to know. What's going on, and yes, the the province runs the municipalities by the law. By, they do.
Do they have the final say on this?
Yes.
So they can reject it?
Yes, they can say, that we, that's, we are sending it in right away, we're doing this.
Municipal board.
It goes to the board, and they could say, you know what, I don't like that.
Final or the province got the final say?
The municipal board.
Municipal board.
So how confident do you think they'll pass, let's pass it?
I think they'll let us pass it because we've been very vocal, and I don't think they want to continue the the fight, to be honest. That's my, my opinion. They may come back and say, hmm, I don't know if you can do that, but we've, we've stayed within the boundaries, although. I think we've done it a little different than most municipalities, but we've stayed within their guidelines. We would have liked it to have more, like Leo showed you, the options that were there for us to put under special service. We would love to have more under those options if if we were going to do this, but we could only put what's there. We couldn't, what's legislated, you can't make it any different, so. That's where you're at, but I'm pretty confident that we did get permission to uh push back the date of our um for our financial plan. To do this, and so they know we're doing this, they know we are having. We didn't have to have a public meeting, by the way, we could have done it the other way, we could have just.
Gone straight across.
Gone straight across and publicized it and done it. We chose to have a public meeting, and I think by doing that, it says to the province that. Our ratepayers are going to know what's going on, so you best be passing this. Because if they come in and try to change it at the end of the day, it it won't work well.
See, one thing to add to that I had mentioned and Judy kind of touched base on it, is some of these other amalgamated municipalities. Slowly each year shifted a little bit to at-large, and so at the end of the day. When you look at that total, when you actually looked at that impact, it's actually shifting, every municipality has a different situation. Ours is twenty-four-point-four percent and twenty-one percent, but some of these others are into the thirties and even forty percent.
Sixty percent some.
And so when they start shi- hiding this in a sense, you're, it's a huge shift to the to the higher assessed properties, which typically are. The farm properties, and so that's what we've been fighting all the way through, we were unfortunate in that lobbying effort. And then so in turn, they say that this process is simple and easy to understand, the province, and so here we are today going through it, it's simple and easy.
When they won't give you a answer why they want, here's my theory, and I've said this for years, ever since the conservation has amalgamated. They want everybody on one mill rate, and you're going to see another round of amalgamation.
Absolutely.
And what I think will happen, and I might not be around to see it, the new conservation district boundary will be your new municipality. Because they've already got that division made.
I think that that there is one thing that I would, we're the first, we're the first council from amalgamated municipality. And we get along really well, we actually do fairly well. I can tell you, and Rhonda is on the AMM board, there are a lot of municipalities that that's not the case, that is not the case.
Because of the difference between.
So I, I wouldn't know, if I'm a provincial uh person in the provincial government, I would be very leery of going another step. Until you make sure that this is working. Because yes, it might work for Boise Morton, but I can give you countless municipalities that it is not working. There are lawsuits, there are, you've seen them on the news, you've seen, you know, we have counselors, just. My goodness, you can see what's going on around, so. I would, I don't know what the provincial government will do, we certainly will lobby no more amalgamation, we will certainly do that. Uh but, you know, and AMM, they're our uh voice, and so we have certainly put forward our thoughts on it. We're having a district meeting in June, and we will once again talk about, make sure that no more amalgamation is on the table. Like, make that a top priority, and we haven't got things straightened out in in this part, but I think we're working on it. Yep, here.
Yeah, I just have a couple of concerns here I wanted to express. You know, when I look at the decrease in the farm taxes, for example, here on that three-hundred-thousand-dollar property. Basically, that's just amounts to the change in the school taxes, right? There essentially uh any change in the assessment or the tax you're paying on the assessment. For the municipal taxes is negligible. Um, there was also a comment that Leo had made about uh the change in the urban residential versus the rural residential. How the urban people are paying a quarterly tax bill and so on, but keep in mind that the people who live. In the rural areas have a huge expense to pay for drilling a well, providing a septic system. Uh you know, and all of those cost treatment systems to make the water potable. You know, I'd be quite happy if you'd like to run a water line and a sewer and a street light other than where I am, and then I would pay the same.
I agree, we totally agree with that.
Yeah.
So why the change?
Uh well.
Just just hold on, I'm not done yet, but if I look at the rural residential, you know, you're you're going up there on a hundred-thousand-dollar property. Two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and you're going down forty-six on the urban. Okay, and I, and really, the only difference I can see is that supposedly now I would get RCMP protection. For that two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, and I'm still paying for my well and my sewer and, you know, all that other stuff. And for the higher assessed ones, it's three-eighty-eight down for the town, and it's four-twenty-three up for the rural. And I just can't equate that as being fair and equal.
That's, it's a fair statement.
I mean, your formula needs some adjustments, yeah.
We can, we've been tweaking away, but we are um, we all pay in the urban part. We are gonna be building a new lagoon and so that in itself, the rural will have nothing to do with that. So uh you're looking at probably a ten million dollar hit for us in.
Total project.
A total project, right? So we looked at what does policing cost, you know, what does, the other thing, this EMO. I was sitting in um at convention, uh I sat in on one of the speakers. And they're now talking about expanding our fire department to be the first responders. Which will cost us a ton of money to train everybody up, which will be uh difficult at best. Uh e- even if they would wanna do it, right, I mean, so there's other costs coming down. This is, this is coming down the tube from the province, this is not us saying, you know what, we'd really like to take that over. One of the ladies stood up and she said fifteen years ago, we had our own ambulance and we had our own people that drove the ambulance. And that wasn't good enough, you took it away, you put paramedics in there and now we can't get paramedics for the rural. So it's a mess, so now you're saying, well, your fire department is the first one on scene, so maybe we should up that. We need to be prepared for when that happens, cuz that will come down the tubes because they do not have enough paramedics. In our rural areas, everybody knows, so is it a hundred percent fair? Probably not. But it, don't forget that part of it is also on assessment, so the higher the assessed, your house is. The more you're gonna pay, the lower it assess, the less you're gonna pay.
I disagree with that though, it should be a flat rate for every resident.
Well, we wanted to do that, Lonnie, that's called a flat rate, we took that to the government, I'm, I.
Why should a guy have a five hundred dollar house?
I agree.
Pay more than the guy has a two hundred, a hundred dollar house? They all get the same services.
There's, it's a thing called base rates and other provinces have them. And so what they do is they figure out what it costs to run all these things and then they divide it by the number of households, period. Right, that's what you do.
There's your answer right here.
Well, we didn't.
We're restricted on what we can do.
We can't do that.
Through the municipal act, which is to what you had just mentioned. Uh implemented and legislated by the province.
Yeah, or puppets.
Yeah, well, we.
Only that yours puppet to the province.
Yeah, pretty much.
It's not right away, Hall is tapped, you're in fair.
Yes, Bill.
I was under the impression wrongly apparently, that the RCMP were a federal organization. And that they equally gave all Canadians protection and assistance. And obviously that is wrong, the other problem as I see it is uh. Most of us believe that the MLAs that we elect to the legislature. Are the ones who who instigate the decision-making process. But so many of these decisions are made by bureaucrats. Who really uh don't seem to be under control of anybody. Uh and they're making more and more regulations for us to follow. And it is rapidly getting to the point where many of the things that we have enjoyed in a small community like this. We've been able to afford a drink, we've been able to afford a swimming pool and we had the enough lifeguards to take care of it. But now the bureaucrats have changed things so much. It's questionable whether we're gonna be able to continue to have these great services and facilities that we've had in the past. And I don't know whether it's a fault of the MLAs not standing up and and uh explaining to the bureaucrats. What is really required or they just let them go ahead and do it. But I see that as a, as a real problem.
No, you're you're right, Bill, and I think there's going to come a time in the very near future that we're gonna be having public meetings to say. What services do you want cut? Because at some point, you know, you're gonna be, you can't, this can't continue, right, we know that. So we will have to look at that, but for this meeting, this is the best that we could come up with, is it perfect? No, it's not, is it, you know?
One more comment in regard to the uh assessment of rural uh rural residences. Residents in town, you expect with inflation that the value of that residence is going to increase. But the value of a farm residence is not going to increase. In fact, most of the time now, the land that has a residence on it is purchased by someone who doesn't need that residence at all. So if the value goes to zero, it's the land that the people want to buy.
So.
I'm just wondering whether that's taken into consideration in the assessment on farm residences.
We did talk about that and we talked about, there are a lot of vacant farmhouse houses out there that is probably still being taxed. As a resident, even though they could have been empty for the last ten or fifteen years. So I would suggest if you have one of those on your land, that you get a permit for doing something with it. Or go to the assessment branch and say, come out and assess this piece of property. Because you may be assessed at thirty, forty thousand dollars for a house that is not inhabitable. And so you, if you've got those on your land, I would be very careful and I would make sure you get ahold of the assessment branch and say. You need to come out and look at this, this is not assessed at thirty thousand dollars, so when you look at your tax bill, look at that. That says resident on there and then say, whoa.
And if you're not sure about the process, you can feel free to stop by the office and I'll help you.
Right.
Go through that process.
Yes.
Yeah, it goes even beyond that, because if someone is buying a parcel of land, even if it has a farmyard on it that somebody was using the house. And they don't need that house, they're, they don't really wanna pay for something that they're going to have to then pay to demolish. And clear the trees and so on, so they can farm that land, so it actually makes that parcel of land worth w- worth less.
No, that's a, that's a really good point and you know, with the shortage of housing, I don't think there'd ever be a place that you couldn't rent if you wanted to. To get some income back out of it.
And to add to your point too, sir.
No, that's right, it's a good point.
That portion that's residential, you're paying more than the portion that's uh if it was changed to a farm property. So in that situation, you're actually.
Better.
Better off to get that change and so again, I could help i- and if anyone is dealing with that type of situation or is unsure. Feel free to stop by the office and and set up an appointment if I sell it.
I think, you know, generally you're going in the right direction, but I think you still need to tweak those formulas. Because that's much too high a drop for the urban versus a high rate increase for the rural.
Oh, that's a fair comment and certainly we can keep that.
If it was a hundred up, a hundred down, fine, you know, but when it's going uh uh three hundred eighty eight down. And four hundred and twenty three up, that's basically an eight hundred dollar difference.
Yep, no, that's.
That's huge.
The RCMP, pardon me, this will be my last comment, the RCMP um. It takes some time for them to get from Calonia or whatever to any of our residences. And I can't resist this, if there's been a rain, they'll never get there.
Point taken.
Is there a difference in the resident uh in the rural area, non agriculture and um acreages? Is there a difference on, are they all grouped the same?
Acreages would be residential rural residents.
And if you're farming on it on a piece of land that's taxed the same?
Your, if you're farming land, your farmland is taxed as farmland.
No, I mean, the resident only.
Yeah, the residents on either a farmland or acreage in the rural is.
Yeah, you just gotta look at your tax bill to see that very first line.
So so still the same, non agriculture?
It's not, yeah.
Okay, that's still gonna be there yet, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So I don't need to mention the state of the drama, roads and have somebody else who's done it?
No, that's very, we're. We're gonna have another meeting just for that.
Need to be careful, is that right?
Just a couple of questions, you mentioned quite a few times Leo's, the school tax debate, like you're obviously aware of there's a cap on that, how much a owner can get.
Yep.
For, yeah, this, there there is a plan by the province for twenty twenty four and then it changes in twenty twenty five.
So you have no gap at all and will be per quarter?
Yeah, do you know, I I just heard it on the news, so we haven't got any, we haven't got any information. But it's my understanding it's gonna be a tax credit rather than, right?
Okay, so I just wondered if that was in your numbers making?
No.
The um, the difference being down thirty one.
Yeah.
Okay, and just to clarify, like there'll be no increase on the farmland until the new assessment comes out. There's none of this new levy will be applied to be allowed.
No, and that's why we did it this year, so you know, because if you did it on an assessment year, right? And then it's like, how do you figure that out? Because if your assessment on your land, if your neighbor sold for a huge amount of money, your assessment on your land is going up. So this is the year to do this, so that when we, when you get your tax bill, you can look at it and say. If it's gone up, all it is, is going to be for the policing, that's what, your farmland shouldn't change. Only, it will change only the amount that our budget does, right?
Yeah.
So if we go up three percent, that will change, but as far as the taxation on it. You won't see any difference on your farmland and we did that very specifically.
Awesome, thank you. Um one last question, and are you actually going to go to a one mill rate?
Yeah, we are.
So I've just seen the uh the basis on like, you know, how much increase there is with one or twenty there or whatever. So what's your thoughts of what you're gonna do at the end of that, are you gonna keep a special levy or are you gonna just then?
See, what we'll have to do uh every assessment year when we get the rollout is we'll have to review this to see if we need to tweak. Cuz if there's a huge tax shift again in the assessment, while we may have to revisit this to to keep that fair tax distribution. We don't want it to all go on the high assessed property, we want everyone to be paying their fair share. So even though, yes, we have it uh proposed for seven years, we will be reviewing it every second year. Because because of the assessment impact.
Yeah, so just uh on that part to give a better reason for just from town, some, you mentioned you obviously live in in the rural area. You mentioned the three hundred and thirty eight dollars, when the new assessment comes out, three hundred and thirty dollars is gonna be a spit in the bottom of a cup. On how much our taxes go up, correct?
It's absolutely true because the assessment goes, and that's why we wanted to do it this way. So that you actually can look at them every other year when the assessment comes through, it's a lot of work for our staff. Like it's way easier just to go to credits board, but by doing this, we can actually adjust it. You know, and and like you've said, in fairness, maybe we didn't adjust it quite the right way or enough, but we can adjust it. Whereas if you don't, if you just put one right through, it's assessment only, so.
Gonna be the next question, like you're gonna adjust every second year on the assessment.
Yep.
We'll be reviewing it to see if we adjust, yeah.
So when you do adjust it, do you have to go through this whole process?
Yeah, and you, if it's uh within that seven year period, we would be repealing this bylaw if it's approved and having a new one.
You see why we said it was much easier to have two mill rates? But no, we were willing to do that and if we've got it set up this way, the ongoing councils will do it this way. Because you've gone through this whole process, but yeah, two years from now, we'll be having another one of these meetings probably and we'll be going through it again. And saying, huh, well, this worked or didn't work, right? Um it's a, it's not, I'll tell you, it's been a certainly a learning curve for everyone on council. Because you know, seven years ago, we started, well, this is, this is good, right, well, no, it's not good. It's very difficult cuz there's so many things that you have to take into consideration, you know? Like you don't wanna, you don't wanna overtax our businesses, you wanna be careful with them, you wanna be careful with the farmers. You need to be careful with the residents that are low income, you know, we all know who are in our communities that are at risk. You have to be mindful of all of that, but hopefully we came up with kind of a mediocre proposal. Is it perfect? No.
And as we mentioned before, most, we know most of these amalgamated municipalities that just went straight across the board. And the rural farm properties saw a huge impact, so this way here it mitigates that.
What's your plan B?
There, there isn't, well, we can go straight across the board, that would be the answer.
And like say, if all was out, the province decides to do it.
Yeah, yeah, and in reality, it does, yeah, Rob.
Lonnie, one of your comments uh made me think of, you were likely in on one of these meetings that we sat with the government. And I asked, if if we just stick with one and two, what will you do? Their first comment wa- was, we'll take away your funding.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
And then Richard, if if we ever go to watershed districts as a municipality, Boise, Maine, Morton will be split.
We already are split.
But we will be, a third of us will be in a municipality that runs from Boise all the way to the Red River. And that, that would be disastrous.
As far as I'm concerned, the new districts that have enough CDs is disastrous.
If they're really large.
So it's, it's.
Too big.
It's the public that has to start lobbying.
Well, I think so because I can see another round of amalgamation coming.
Yeah, well, we have never been informed of that, but um certainly like Rob said, we did say, what if we didn't do this? First of all, they'd come in and do it for us and if they didn't do that, they would not give us funding. It's like if you don't have an audited financial statement every year, you don't get your funding, right? And it's the same principle, they just go, you know what, you're not getting your funding. So we, yes, we're puppets of the provincial government, yes, we are, but we still try to fight and do the best we can. For every, each and every ratepayer in this municipality, we really do, we put, you know, there isn't one of us on here that are here. Uh for our public health, I mean, it's a, it's a tough job, these are tough decisions and certainly it affects everybody. Because tomorrow, we're gonna have people that are maybe low income, that are gonna go, what did you do to me? Because their taxes are gonna go up because of this averaging it out. Because we also thought it's fair that everybody should pay a portion of the policing. Just because you have a house that is uh not um worth three hundred thousand dollars. If you're dialing nine one one, your chances of getting police are are just as good as my chances, right? So it is a really fine line that we that we work with, yes.
Speaking of the RCMP, I have a question regarding the cost. You mentioned they are, they have a twenty five percent vacancy, I believe.
Yes, that, the, this.
Pay the full contract cost or do they reduce the payment by twenty five percent?
They have a crazy formula that they go by.
So we.
Part of it is the whole policing cost in the province and then part of it's our region and part of it's just directly um related to us. It's, I still have an understa- they send us a spreadsheet and it's about ten pages long. So if you would like, I could provide you a copy with it.
Yeah, sure. One of the big costs will will is go overtime, they're short.
Sure, because they're short, right? And so they're, they're short people, so they have overtime and then they bring in from another detachment. Because we've had people here from Brandon, we've had people from all over RCMP for things that have happened in our municipality. Well, we pay for that, but there's no option, like I talked to Rivers, they have their own police force. They're going back to RCMP, it's.
We used to have one constable.
Oh, I know we did, Mr. Coolin. Ed Coolin, yeah, you know, it's, it's, times have changed.
But you know, he did very well, he kept us on our toes because.
Oh, he certainly did.
Times of the day and the night.
Yeah, we never knew when he was gonna be around, right?
Come on, Judy, that was true.
Okay, well, maybe he knew, yeah. But I did talk to Rivers about it because they have their own and Rivers said that they have an awful time. Because they, the RCMP now have a collective agreement, so we got stuck with retro pay, we weren't even at the table. We never even had a voice at the table and all of a sudden we get a bill for retro pay from when they started their, you know. We didn't have a choice, so we've been fighting that and that's apparently going to the courts, but it's, we're gonna lose, we know it. So the federal government should have picked that. So the federal government should have picked that up. They're the ones that were sitting at the table with the R C M P, negotiating a contract that they're not even paying for. Right? Like, makes no sense. But having said that, I, I know Rivers said, we can't continue, because we have to have four men now, we can't have just two. We have to have so many police cars. There's the, the compensation, there's, there's a whole lot goes on with policing, so.
We'll all be watching to see whether.
Yes, we'll watch. But anyway, maybe we should get a new Ed Coolin.
There, there are some other towns, like Saint Anne, Altona, Hope Cooley.
Yeah.
Uh, there are probably a few others, too.
They have. And and some of larger populations, uh, you know, certainly the cities all have their own. But we're not in a position at this point. But when I go to municipalities, we go to these meetings, and there's only a handful of us municipalities that play for, pay for policing. So once again, the lobbying that it should be a per capita. Whether you live wherever you live, I don't care. Like, there are municipalities that are around us that don't pay anything for policing, because they're under a certain amount of people.
Just west of us.
Just west. So, you know, so we go and.
GPS tracker in their cars, and it'll record two roads they drive on?
It'd be great if we could get a copy of that.
Anyway, if you want any of those reports that we have, we'll share them with you. It's interesting. Are there any other questions? We will be doing the first reading of this tonight, but it will only be the first reading. And we will do that, because then we can open it up for discussion at the next meeting. And we won't be doing the second and third reading until after, at the next meeting. So if that is what we do.
So we need to close in here.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna close this hearing unless there's other questions. And I do thank you again for coming out tonight. I hope it was somewhat informative for you. I hope that you understand that this isn't perfect and that we're trying. Um, and if there are any questions, don't hesitate to call us and and ask us, or come to a meeting. Come to our next meeting if you'd like and.
There was, there was one thing on the, on the first thing that you mailed out was, in my mind, a little bit misleading. And the method and rate calculating the special status taxes, the number two, and amount for each parcel of one hundred percent.
Yeah. I'll bet you that caused a little stir, didn't it?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to, you probably knew.
We shouldn't have done that, let's say, right?
The other thing I wish you could have done was you printed four twenty-twenty-three tax statements. Could you have made that for twenty-twenty-four one?
Well, we can't, because we don't have them.
We still have to do our financial plan.
And we can't do the financial plan till we get this done, right? That's why we've asked for an extension on our financial plan. That's why, but, and yes. And the other thing is, we only sent those letters to people that it would concern. Like, if you own.
The affected properties.
Just the affected properties. So maybe we should have sent it to everybody. I don't know.
The requirement in the act says if you're doing a small, not a, a certain group of properties, you have to, uh, send them a letter directly.
Okay.
We also, uh, went ahead and put it on, in the newspaper, and also had it on social media. But the ones that received the letter are the ones that, one of those components, or potentially all of them, uh, are, will be affecting your property.
Yeah, I can see where that per parcel hundred percent maybe caused a little ire. That's maybe why we have such a good turnout tonight. Anyway, um, at this time, if, are there any other questions?
You said that you only sent the people who would have had, that's all? Just the people that were, not everybody got the letter?
Why not?
My fault.
Yeah. I'm just wondering why, um.
We each got a letter.
Yeah. Did you get a letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, I forgot a letter.
Yeah, well, because you probably are both landowners, are you?
Yeah.
There you go. We're doing everything by the book. Anyway, any other questions regarding this? Thank you for your time. I, with that, I'm gonna close the hearing. All right, uh, we're gonna continue with the meeting. Do you wanna sign this, you two?